Ladies and gentlemen, and to the many members of the PD here tonight, thank you all for being here. Welcome to the final meeting of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners for 2023. This is our 2024 final budget hearing, as well as a meeting, as well as the regular meeting. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondik.
President.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Chief? The next item on our agenda is not a usual item on our agenda, but for us this year, it is one we meet with a little bit of sadness. Tonight is the final meeting of our colleague, Commissioner Wexler. And so we just have a couple of things we'd like to say, a couple of things we'd like to present, and then also, as always, take some photographs. When Bill Wexler, as far as I know, in my history here in the Haverford Township and maybe the history of Haverford Township, this only happened one time. Bill Wexler was sworn into office in January of 2006, and several minutes later was nominated and elected to be the president of this board. That is the credibility and the experience that Bill brought to this office from the very first day. It has been absolutely my pleasure to serve on this board with Bill. Bill was always, I could always count on Bill to take very principled positions, very thoughtful positions, and Bill always thought about his constituents, but also always thought about the good of the township. The thing I will remember Bill most for, and the thing I think we will all appreciate Bill for, is his leadership. And so I played a small role in helping to pick out what we thought would be an appropriate gift for Bill, to think about his time here on the board. So I would ask Bill to come forward. Bill, in recognition of your service, particularly, I mean, as the ninth ward commissioner for 16 years, but as president of the board from 2008 to 2012, 2018, and 2020, and personally, as having been your vice president one of those years, we want to present you with this gavel.
Oh, thank you very much.
And it says, Township of Haverford, William Wexler, Ninth Ward Commissioner, 2008 to '23, President Board of Commissioners, 2008 to '12, 2018, and 2020. I call this meeting to order.
Thank you.
And Bill, we're also presenting to you this proclamation from our board in recognition of faithful and dedicated service to his community as a member of the Board of Commissioners representing the Ninth Ward in the Township of Haverford from January 2008 to December 2023, presented by your fellow commissioners Larry Holmes, Judy Trombetta, Brian Gondik, Sherry Forstie-Grupp, Kevin McCloskey, Laura Cavender, Connor Quinn, and Jerry Hart.
Thank you very much.
I know we have, if I could bring, can we bring the whole board up for a picture? Oh, wait, we have one more. We have one more item.
I'm really sorry. I know Bill didn't want this, but you know Lori.
So I'll admit, I played no role in this, but this is to commemorate Bill, your service to the township. Let's show it to our colleagues here. And then we will show it to the camera. Obviously, the new building, the old building, the fire company, and the ambulance company, something that Bill in particular had great impact on here in the township. And I do have to share this with regard specifically to your role as a firefighter and as somebody involved in EMS. One of my colleagues in the Democratic Party, Liz Goldberg, she apologizes for not being able to be here tonight. What she was going to say, and she asked me to tell you this, is that in her house, they live by the Commissioner Wexler rule, and no one ever lights a candle on the second floor, okay? So if there's one family you've saved from the issues of a candle fire, it's them, and they thank you, and we all thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. I'll be quick because I don't want to hold up the police department here. Be a good time, I don't want bank robberies to happen on my watch. First and foremost, it's been my pleasure to serve. It's been an honor to work with all of you gentlemen back there on EMS calls and fire calls as well. But I really want to thank the staff of Haverford Township. Well, the Commissioner of the Ward gets a lot of phone calls for many problems and complaints. It's the staff that solves the problems and those complaints. It's not us. We call them, they provide the detailed explanation to us and how we have to do it, why we're wrong in trying to get something done, to get Public Works to go, or to get a police officer to come. But in a nutshell, the staff of this township allows the commissioners, all of us, to look like heroes to our residents. So on behalf, I really want to thank them. Without them, our job wouldn't exist to the degree that we do it. And I just want to say a few words. We have by far the best emergency services in the county. We have a police department that half of our here tonight for our new officers, which is probably the best trained department and the envy of the county. I can't tell you how many times the DA, both the current one and the previous one and the one before that, said we should be proud of our police department, and we are. We're proud of you guys. Our EMS and volunteer fire companies are probably the highest trained companies in the county, or eastern Pennsylvania, I'd say. The amount of training, it's all tracked by state regulations and computers programs now. We have probably the highest trained in eastern Pennsylvania, the most training hours and the most dedicated corps there. And for what they do, they save the township a lot of money each year. So I've asked the county council to look at credits. The state had passed an act two years ago that we're allowed to do it. Haverford was the leader, we gave a 20% tax rebate to our firefighters and EMS volunteers that meet certain criteria. Chester County last month is now giving 100% of their county taxes to EMS and volunteer firefighters. So I'm calling on there, I've actually written the president of County Council, she responded back late this afternoon that she's for it, and that she's going to work with her staff to try and look at a rebate program similar to Chester County, so that our young people don't move out to Chester County and buy homes that are less, like the Violas, you know. But we want to keep our people homegrown here, and if we got to give them tax incentives to do it, it's going to save us money in the long run, because if we have to build and pay for entire fire company and their salaries, it's a lot of money throughout there. So that's one of the things. The other departments, codes, community development, our recreation departments, our professional departments, most people don't see. They see recreation, but codes and community development, they're the departments that make the life here good. That's why people want to live here. They come here, they behind the scenes are doing quality of life issues. They're enforcing our zoning codes, making sure our buildings reach that land development, that our buildings look and should feel the way that the rest of the township are. So I thank them for their professional work in there as well. And then Dave and Amy, best management team in the county by far. I can't thank you guys enough. Amy, Dave, your management's been spectacular. I've been blessed in the beginning, Mike English, and Larry Zantilli, and now Dave is the manager, and Amy is the director of finance. We have a top-notch staff, and I can't thank you enough for what you've accomplished and what you continue to do. So thank you, Dave and Amy. Public Works, the behind-the-scenes team, keeps the township running. We talked about the police and fire, they maintain those vehicles, they keep our police, fire, they keep our police, our fire, our ambulances, trash trucks, snow removal, leaf vehicles, and all the various mechanical equipment on the streets to serve us. In addition, they repair our sewer lines, storm drains, repair streetlights, remove trees, collect our trash and recycling material. They're responsive and they do it very professionally. We're better than most other townships here. You can tell when the snow removal comes, we're the cleanest curb-to-curb township in the area. And I can't forget our trash crew. Police is important, but if we didn't have our trash people picking up trash, we'd be getting killed. I can't not appreciate what they do for us. Rain, snow, wind, hurricanes, heat, and extreme cold, they're there for us. We need to appreciate them more and make them full-time employees, so that we, as a township, can pay them a fair wage and provide insurance and health benefits to them and their families. Right now, most people don't know, a lot of those guys are part-timers, and they don't qualify for those type of things. This is long overdue, it costs money, and Amy will probably kill me, but it's, and I ask the next board to take a hard look at this issue. It's a social issue, it's an economic issue, but it's got to be fair to those people that do a ton of work in extreme environments for us and the whole thing. I also want to thank my fellow commissioners on this and past boards. Thank you very much for the time and effort you gave, you give the citizens of this township. What you do is often underappreciated, but we've all worked hard in our own way to support the residents of our respective wards, so I thank you all for your service, all of you, and over the years, and what you're going to do in future years, especially the ones that just got elected. And to my family, thank you, for sitting back there. Without the support of my four daughters and 10 grandchildren, I would not have enjoyed my time nearly as much. My wife, Betsy, I could not have taken on this role without your understanding and support these last 16 years. It's been hard. It's been hard on the family, just like it's hard on the police and fireman's family. It's been her support that I will be indebted to forever. What other woman comes out on her birthday to come to a township meeting? So happy birthday, huh? And then finally, to the citizens of the Ninth Ward, I offer my most heartfelt thanks. We live in a great neighborhood with great families and good neighbors on each side of our houses. I thank you for allowing me to serve you for four terms as your commissioner. My focus has always been on you and your families. My job as a commissioner has been to serve you and only you. I've always felt I report to you and not anyone else. While there are many issues in the world, the ones that affect us the most are the local ones that our township controls. Taking on regional, state, and national political issues when the sewer line in the street is clogged or your trash is not picked up was never in my purview. You are the people that elected me to serve and to help navigate your concerns. Quite simply, you are the citizens that can vote for the commissioner, and that made you the most important people in the township to me. My philosophy was always straightforward. I work for you and for you only. I thank you all from the bottom of my heart for your confidence and trust over these last 16 years that I served, and I congratulate your Commissioner-elect, Mike McCollum. Good luck, and I know that he will continue to put you first and foremost in his efforts. Thank you all, and God bless you. Thanks.
If I could just ask my colleagues to join us up here, we'll take a picture or two. And then I do want to note, two previous commissioners and presidents of the board in attendance tonight, Chris Connell in the back and Mario Aliva right here. I know that Dan Siegel hoped to come tonight, he was not able to come tonight for circumstances beyond his control, but he certainly sends his regards and his thanks as well. So we all up here? What do we want to do? Just want to go one side? Yeah. It has been my privilege to work with you on this board. And I think the next item on the agenda is yours. We now consider the appointment of two entry-level police officers. I invite Kathy Dawson of the Civil Service Commission to come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here in my role as the administrator of the Civil Service Commission. On Monday, September 11, 2023, this board formally approved the list of entry-level police officers eligible to be hired by the township. So on behalf of the Civil Service Commission, I'm here to request the appointment of two entry-level police officers. We'd like to present the following candidates for your consideration and approval to be hired. The first group of people, Kevin Redding, Cole Heinz, and Samuel Willis.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Dawson. Do I hear a nomination?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve Kevin Redding Jr. for entry-level police position.
Hang on a second. We have a motion in a second, any other motions? Motion to close nominations?
So moved.
All in favor of closing motions?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Berman, will you call the roll on the appointment of Kevin Redding, Haverford Township entry-level police officer?
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Mr. Redding.
Commissioner Cavender.
Mr. Redding.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Redding.
Commissioner Wexler.
Mr. Redding.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. Redding.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes, Police Officer Redding.
So let me formally introduce Kevin Redding Jr. Kevin is 24 years old, was born and raised in Haverford. He attended Cardinal Foley Grade School in Haverford Middle School, graduated from Haverford High School in 2018, then furthered his education at Whiter University, receiving a Bachelor of Science degree, Business Administration. Kevin will attend the Montgomery County Police Academy, then will be sworn in as a 391st police officer to join the Haverford Township Police Department since 1916. He follows in his father's footsteps Kevin Senior, who passed away of COVID complications and a lotta duty death in 2021. He's here tonight with his mom, Donna, his sister Kate, and his aunts, uncles, and family friends. Kevin?
And again, we'd like to present the following candidates for your consideration and approval to be hired. Cole Heinz, Samuel Willis, and Anthony Blasi.
Thank you. I will consider a nomination.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler. Cole Heinz for entry-level police position for Haverford Township.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any other appointments?
To close nominations?
Second. We have a motion to close in a second, all in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Berman, will you call the roll on the nomination of Cole Heinz for entry-level Haverford Township police officer?
Commissioner Gondik.
Cole Heinz.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Mr. Heinz.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Heinz.
Commissioner Cavender.
Mr. Heinz.
Commissioner Quinn.
Cole Heinz.
Commissioner Hart.
Mr. Heinz.
Commissioner Wexler.
Cole Heinz.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. Heinz.
Commissioner Holmes.
Haverford Township Police Officer Cole Heinz.
Let me introduce Cole Heinz. Cole is 22 years old, born and raised in Drexel Hill. He attended Hillcrest Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School. He graduated from Upper Darby High School in 2020, and then earned his associate's degree from Delaware County Community College in 2023 for Business Administration. On Thursday, he will graduate from Delaware County Police Academy, where he attended since July. He will become the 390th officer to join the Haverford Township Police Department since 1916. He's here with his mom, Lori, his dad, Robert, brother Robert, and girlfriend Caitlin, and all their friends and family.
As usual, I always say, on behalf of the Civil Service Commission, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners. We're always pleased to provide this service to both the township as well as the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
You are most welcome, and we were always well-served by the Civil Service Commission, so thank you. And thank you, Chief.
And if I could close with this first, Commissioner Wexler, on behalf of the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire, your undying support, you as a fireman, you understand and always understood where we came from and what we needed and how we operated. And from all of us, all five fire companies, we appreciate you, believe me. Now, for the police department, because as you see, many of you have been here over the past few years and seen many officers sworn in and hired. In the next three to six years, the police department will change dramatically. We will lose 18 officers to retirement, including myself, so we'll have much, much younger force as we move forward, but they will be dedicated and they will serve well within the township. With the help of the civil service, we test and we hire the best. And you can see what's standing in the back of the room, we have the best police department in Delaware County. And I say that without any thought, because I am biased, but I know they're the best. So thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, commissioners. You're most welcome. They're just camera hounds, Bill. They were here for you, don't worry. All right, next on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. I have three registered speakers tonight that I will invite up. I hope, Zach Pisick, I hope I say your name correctly. Please come forward. Floor is yours.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Zach Pisick, and I am the Senior Director of Public Affairs at the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association, the PRLA. Thank you, Board President, Commissioner Holmes, and Board Vice President, Commissioner Trombetta, and thank you to the entire Board of Commissioners for the opportunity to join you in Haverford Township this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to submit feedback regarding the Business Revitalization and Modernization Match Grant Program, a praiseworthy initiative being explored right here in Haverford Township, funded through the American Rescue Plan Act. There are more than 26,000 restaurants, 1,500 hotels, and 100 travel and tourism partners that we represent at PRLA, and on behalf of the entire association, I'm here today to speak in support of the proposed program. As many of you know, the hospitality industry is a vital contributor to any region's economic and community fabric. The owners and operators that we represent, like many others in the business communities, have faced unprecedented challenges during the COVID-19 pandemic. The ripple effects have been felt by restaurants and hotels, which have been long-lasting, and they forced many to make difficult decisions that have affected their growth and their development over the past few years. The Business Revitalization and Modernization Matching Grant Program is hope for many of these establishments, offering awards that will fuel economic resurgence. ARPA money, as many of you know, was intended, in many cases, to provide relief to those most impacted by the pandemic. As you might imagine, operators in the hospitality industry still face difficulties today that have surfaced because of the pandemic. Whether it be the worst labor crisis on record, supply chain disruptions, or inflationary pressures, restaurants continue to have to make decisions every day that unfortunately have caused many to plateau as it relates to growth. This program being considered right here in Haverford works to address hardships faced by businesses. The ability to cover expenses related to renovations, energy-efficient equipment and upgrades, technology enhancements will undoubtedly serve as a lifeline for our local businesses. By fostering these improvements, Haverford Township's aim not only to support individual businesses, but also to elevate the entire economic and community landscape, attracting more customers and ensuring long-term competitiveness. Ultimately, we believe accelerating growth that would have likely happened had the world not paused in 2020 and 2021. I want to applaud the work of Commissioner Trombetta and the broader Economic Development Committee here in Haverford. It's great to see government collaborating with the business community, synergizing, and ultimately landing on something effective that will help so many. The innovative structure of the program, as it's been drafted and designed with a 75% reimbursement of initial capital investment, demonstrates a commitment and a shared responsibility and a shared commitment to the growth of our vital business community. This will undoubtedly encourage businesses to invest wholeheartedly in their projects, fostering a collaborative approach to economic recovery, and it's really something that we at PRLA hope will become contagious and be duplicated and replicated throughout the state. We commend Haverford Township for setting clear eligibility criteria, ensuring that the grant reaches those that are most in need, and as we move forward, I urge everybody in Haverford to consider the profound impact that this grant program is going to have on the revitalization of local businesses. Thank you all for supporting the economic vitality of Haverford Township. This program is not just a grant to the industry that we represent at PRLA, but it's an investment in the resilience and the prosperity of the community. On behalf of the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association, I wholeheartedly endorse the Business Revitalization and Modernization Matching Grant Program. Look forward to witnessing the positive transformation that this will ultimately bring. Thank you all for your time and consideration, and just know that PRLA stands ready to assist in any way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pisick.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Jean Angel.
Hi, I'm Jean Angel, Executive Director of Discover Haverford, and I'm here to speak in support of the proposed matching program for business modernization and revitalization. But before I do that, I just want to thank you, Bill, for your years of service, and I've enjoyed working with you and watching you in your leadership roles. We're privileged to have so many established and strong businesses in our community who have been open in the township for generations. I recently partnered with the Parks and Recreation Department to honor businesses who had been open for 50 years or more. I was so impressed that I found 25 of those businesses and 10 who have been open over 85 years. That's a testament to those business owners, many who are township residents, and to the community who have supported them. During the pandemic, Discover Haverford worked hard to support our businesses and to encourage residents to shop and dine local. We were lucky that few of our businesses closed during the pandemic. businesses, but also to elevate the entire economic and community landscape, attracting more customers and ensuring long-term competitiveness. Ultimately, we believe accelerating growth that would have likely happened had the world not paused in 2020 and 2021. I want to applaud the work of Commissioner Trombetta and the broader Economic Development Committee here in Haverford. It's great to see government collaborating with the business community, synergizing, and ultimately landing on something effective that will help so many. The innovative structure of the program, as it's been drafted and designed with a 75% reimbursement of initial capital investment, demonstrates a commitment and a shared responsibility and a shared commitment to the growth of our vital business community. This will undoubtedly encourage businesses to invest wholeheartedly in their projects, fostering a collaborative approach to economic recovery, and it's really something that we at PRLA hope will become contagious and be duplicated and replicated throughout the state. We commend Haverford Township for setting clear eligibility criteria, ensuring that the grant reaches those that are most in need. And as we move forward, I urge everybody in Haverford to consider the profound impact that this grant program is going to have on the revitalization of local businesses. Thank you all for supporting the economic vitality of Haverford Township. This program is not just a grant to the industry that we represent at PRLA, but it's an investment in the resilience and the prosperity of the community. On behalf of the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association, I wholeheartedly endorse the Business Revitalization and Modernization Matching Grant Program. Look forward to witnessing the positive transformation that this will ultimately bring. Thank you all for your time and consideration, and just know that PRLA stands ready to assist in any way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pisick.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Jean Angel.
Hi, I'm Jean Angel, Executive Director of Discover Haverford, and I'm here to speak in support of the proposed matching program for business modernization and revitalization. But before I do that, I just want to thank you, Bill, for your years of service, and I've enjoyed working with you and watching you in your leadership roles. We're privileged to have so many established and strong businesses in our community who have been open in the township for generations. I recently partnered with the Parks and Recreation Department to honor businesses who had been open for 50 years or more. I was so impressed that I found 25 of those businesses and 10 who have been open over 85 years. That's a testament to those business owners, many who are township residents, and to the community who have supported them. During the pandemic, Discover Haverford worked hard to support our businesses and to encourage residents to shop and dine local. We were lucky that few of our businesses closed during the pandemic, and we even had new businesses open during that time. Businesses weathered the storm with creative pivots and the committed support of our community. I've been so proud of the way that our township commissioners and staff have found ways to support our businesses as well. The expanded temporary outdoor dining permits is a great example, followed by the Back-to-Business Grants and the Grants for Women and Minority-Owned Businesses. This past year, Discover Haverford partnered with the township on the Matching Facade Grant Program, and I was able to see firsthand how meaningful these grants were to our businesses. We look forward to the opportunity to work with you again on this new grant program. If the township, Discover Haverford, and our residents continue to work together to support our business community, we can be part of the next generation of businesses who are open 50 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next registered speaker is Peter Diskin.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm back. Nice to see you again. I was here last month. Couple of things before I'm on the clock. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Berman. I received your email. I saw it late Friday evening. I may take you up on your offer for a breakout meeting. Thank you. Appreciate that. Second point of business is, I think my cause might be better served if Chief Viola was in the room, because a lot of what I have to talk about is police-related issues regarding the traffic on Colfax. Okay? So, rather than spin my wheels, it would be better, I think, if you were here.
You could, if you'd like, you certainly can get up again later in the meeting when people are invited to speak again.
Okay.
Not an agenda item? What? Oh, I mean, our deputy chief is now back in the room.
Oh, hi. Nice to see you. Thank you.
So...
Okay, good. And then the last point before we get going is, I originally came about a week and a half ago and asked whether I could have up to 10 minutes of time to fully present my position. I was told that it might be too busy and that typically it's three to five minutes, which if I need to adhere to that, I will do that. However, I'll do that only to circle back again at the end of the meeting. So, one way or the other, you're going to get 10 minutes out of me tonight. So, I don't even know if I would go 10 minutes in my initial discussion. It might be seven, but keeping it to three is a little bit tight. Could I have a few extra minutes, please?
So, you certainly can have a few extra minutes. I might stop you at five or six, and then you're certainly free to get up again.
I understand that. I appreciate that. I'll set my timer for seven. Is that fair?
And I'll set mine for five and a half, and I'll meet you somewhere in between.
I'll set it for six. Okay.
All right.
Okay. So, thank you. It's good to be here again. I don't know, first of all, for the record, Peter Diskin, 40 Colfax Road. Been there for 32 years. I mentioned, you know, I worked as a nurse in the community for 25-plus years. I didn't mention my wife also worked in the community as a nurse for 40 years, and two of our daughters work as nurses currently in the community. So, we have been trained to look out for what I would like to believe is the greater good and to recognize safety issues and to advocate when we think something is worth advocating for. So, I don't come here lightly. Now, what I initially was proposing, and this dates back to late July, just to recap briefly, a lot of trouble getting out of my driveway due to the lineup of SUVs, pickup trucks, vans, everything that are forced to park on my side of Colfax Road, which I take it is the north side, because we don't allow, there is no provision for parking on the other side of the street. There are two no-parking signs on the other side of the street at any time. What I'm asking for, if I were to go all the way to the level of asking for parking on both sides of the street, which was my initial idea, is not asking for an exception from Hillcrest, Colfax, Decatur, Clearfield, and Ellis, between Darby and Prescott Roads, which includes the cross-street of Grassland, the first block of Colfax, the unit block, is the exception. We are the only block out of all of those blocks, which are at least 10, that does not allow for parking on both sides of the street. Sergeant Long, who's been very responsive when I've asked for help, has come out. He's done measurements. He's looked at the traffic flow. He did a fire engine test. We've established that a fire engine can pass through when there are two SUVs parked directly across from each other on the block. A fire engine can pass through. I've seen my own test I did with a trash truck. They were able to get through, and I know a school bus can get through. Okay? Clearfield is, you know, up to a foot wider than Colfax. Decatur is also wider than Colfax. Ellis, where cars go down all the time, has parking on both sides of Ellis. That is a foot to a foot and a half less wide than Colfax on my block. The next block of Colfax, just after the intersection of Grassland, is four inches wider, and I actually got my measuring tape to figure that out. And then not only did I do that, but I established that those four inches are accounted for by the fact that the strips between their sidewalk and the curb are four inches less wide. So, that's where our four inches went. But nonetheless, four inches or not, all of the emergency vehicles and the public works vehicles can fit down the first block of Colfax with two large SUVs parked directly across from each other. Cars are turning into our street all the time from Darby Road to beat the traffic light at the intersection of Eagle and Darby Road. Okay? I think almost everybody could acknowledge that there's a traffic problem in the township, and that is a terrible intersection. So, if you don't want to buy the lot that's now available over there, okay, where the gas station used to be, and turn that into a traffic rotary, then please find a way to give us some other help. Because the street next to us, which is Hillcrest, has a "Do Not Enter During Rush Hour" sign there. Okay? That helped them out, but the irony is residential coding-wise, they're coded for a higher-density population. They are like R3, and we're R4, number one. Number two, they have parking on both sides of the street. And number three, that block of Hillcrest is 30 feet wide compared to 2311 on the first block of Colfax. So, if any block in the area should be getting the turn-in traffic, it should be Hillcrest, not Colfax, which has absorbed all the traffic de facto because they can't turn in Hillcrest. Okay? I also stood there at the traffic light on Darby and watched in the afternoon, and I counted 13 out of 15 cars coming down Darby approaching Eagle Road at that intersection in rush hour, go straight. They don't turn right. You know where they're turning right? They're turning right down Ellis Road, Decatur, Clearfield, and Colfax. That's where they're turning right. And they're blowing stop signs left, right, and center in that neighborhood when they come to Grassland and Prescott. It's a wink and a nod. When I grew up, it was you look left, you look right, you look left again, you make sure you count it to three, and you come to a full stop. Okay? So, the three points of the plan are, I went through all the traffic calming measures, I've done all the research. I was told I would have to come up with 80% agreement from the residents on the block to qualify. I did that today. I got my last two signatures. I am now at 80.6%. That's number one. Number two, I can refute that requirement because I went through the Traffic Calming Measures Handbook, and it says all you need is between 50 and 70%. It also says that all the local municipalities are free to make adjustments based on the needs of their community. They don't have to follow those guidelines to the nth degree of perfection. Okay? There's room for common sense and flexibility. Also, I've learned that, yes, we're hamstrung by the state. State does not allow for 15 mile-an-hour speed limits to be enforced except in front of schools. Why? Because they keep kids safe. Okay? We have 17 kids, by my count today, under the age of 10 on the first block of Colfax. A lot of them are under the age of seven. I have four grandchildren under the age of eight who visit frequently. Okay? I am telling you, I hate to say it, but putting everybody on notice, this is a problem waiting to happen. Now, we can say it hasn't happened yet, we have a good traffic record, there haven't been any fatalities, blah, 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 but we also haven't had any, God forbid, school shootings or anything else. But if an eighth grader writes a frightening note, there's going to be a serious police response over there because of the possibility of harm to our children. I am telling you, we have a lot of kids on the first block of Colfax Road. We need better police enforcement. We need education for people coming through, and we need possibly engineering. Those are the three Es mentioned in the Traffic Calming Handbook. Education, enforcement, engineering. The first part, education. Can we please, for the love of God...
We are. We are now.
I am right there. I'm winding up for the close.
Well, I heard the three Es, so go ahead.
The three Es.
I heard...
The first E, education.
Education.
For the love of God, can we please get a couple of yellow signs at either end of the block? Watch children. Curve ahead. Slow. Something like that. Okay? Second point of education. Can we get that thing that went up in front of my house the day after our last meeting? It was a traffic sign, and it had a "Your speed is..." It stayed up for a week. It showed up the day after my last presentation, went right in front of my house, which is not the place for it because I'm 2/3 of the way down the block. It should be in the middle of the block when the cars are really hitting their stride. And oh, by the way, it was misdone because it was facing toward Grassland, not Darby.
I'm waiting for the second, third E, Mr. Diskin. All right, I'll have you come back.
I'll be back at the end. Okay, I'll pick up there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Now, we move on to the portion, anybody who would like to speak in an agenda item tonight? And again, I'll remind folks, the agenda includes not only everything on our regular meeting agenda, but also tonight's budget hearing. And as always, I'll start on my left. Is there anybody on the left who'd like to speak? Mario. We welcome back to the podium former Commissioner and President of the Board, Mario Leva.
Yeah, of course, I came here for Bill tonight. I just wanted to say, Bill, thank you very much for your service to this community. It's greatly appreciated, all the work that you've done, everything that has been done on, under your watch. It really, and I enjoyed myself being part of the board with you, Bill. So, thank you for all that you've done, and good luck in your retirement. It's nice. You're going to have a good time.
Mario, thank you very much. Look at my summoner nose. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Leva. Anybody else in the first row? Anyone in the second row like to speak? Yes?
Something that's not on the agenda?
You can speak later on something that's not on the agenda. This would be for agenda items only. And Commissioner Wexler was on the agenda, so he counts. Anybody in the third row?
Since it includes the budget, what's not on the agenda?
What?
The budget's on here, so anything's probably almost fair game tonight.
Well, no, I mean, if somebody wanted to get up and speak about, for instance, Colfax Road or something like that, that would be a non-agenda item. But we're going to race through the rest of the things, so if you don't mind sticking around for that part of the meeting, we'd love to hear your comments then. In the next row, anybody back there? Final row? Yes. Mr. Connell, former president, Mr. Connell.
Good evening, Chris Connell, 519 Kenmore Road.
Yeah. Good to see you again.
I kind of made that official. I also would like to reach out to Wex tonight and give my thank yous. That, say to yourself, what is the character of a person? A person who graduates Annapolis and serves his country. A person...
I went to West Point.
West Point. West Point.
And we won the other day.
Went to West Point.
Let's just run through that again, and we'll wipe out the YouTube video. All right, go ahead.
A person who went to West Point and served his country. A person who was a resident and served his local fire company as a volunteer. A person who ran for local position and kept it over and over and over, as well as achieved President of the Board. That character speaks for itself. So, there's nothing more to say than thank you very much for what you've done for your country, for your community. God bless you on your endeavors, and Godspeed.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
West Point.
Let's not mix those two up, okay? Big Army win, right? So, moving to the right, anybody here in the first row like to speak? Yes. Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Todd Hall, Second Ward. I'll continue the chorus of thanks to Mr. Wexler for his service on the Board in 2020. I think you know where this could be heading. Yes, there were a lot of world events that happened, and it caused changes to activities in the township, like Playground Camp. I gave him a call as he was President of the Board. At the time, he had a very listening ear. He had a lot of information, both from his own professional background and with working in the township, and was very helpful in hearing my concerns and providing an explanation. So, again, thank you.
All right. Anybody else on the right-hand side, in the first row? The next row?
Seth. I live on Colfax Road, 63 Colfax Road. I met Peter probably a couple of weeks, maybe a couple of months ago, and I'm on the opposite side of the street that he is. And I've been living in Haverford Town probably 20-plus years. Have a small business in Haverford Town. I love Haverford Town. And the reason I moved on Colfax Road, because there's only one side street parking.
Seth, I appreciate that comment. I will invite you back when we get to the part of the meeting where people can speak on non-agenda items.
Oh, I thought that was the agenda.
Sorry, these comments now are limited to items that are on the agenda, and then I'll invite you back up later in the meeting.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You know what? That deserves an explanation. So, the beginning of the meeting, the registered, the Citizens Forum consists of two different types of speakers. Folks who can call in and get on the list, they can speak on any topic, and then anybody is free to get up at that point and speak on a topic that is on our agenda. Later in our meeting, we then invite members of the public to get up and speak on any topic. So, if they hadn't called in and registered to speak at the beginning of the meeting, they're still, you're still invited to come back up again and speak at the end. That's the distinction. So, Peter was able to speak on this topic because he called in and registered to be a speaker. The topic can be spoken about again, and you will be welcome to come back up at the, later in the agenda, when we invite the public back up to speak on non-agenda items. So, thanks for that. Go ahead. Anybody in the back? So, okay, thank you. Thank you for the comments on Business Revitalization and Modernization Grant from Zach and Jean, and Peter, and Seth, and others. We look forward to additional comments at the, later in the meeting. We will next move to the budget hearing and adoption. Our first thing to consider under our budget hearing and adoption is any changes to the 2024 preliminary budget. Commissioner McCloskey, are there any changes to report on the, between the preliminary budget and now?
Yes, Mr. President. As I mentioned at the work session last week, I'd like to make a motion to amend, well, the budget has been amended, excuse me, to 4.395 mils, meaning the tax increase would be 2.3%. This is a reduction from the preliminary budget that was at 4.406 mils, and would have been a 2.58 tax increase. You were all handed paperwork that sort of outlines the specifics of where those numbers come from. As I mentioned at the work session last week, Mr. Berman and Ms. Cuthbertson are constantly reviewing numbers, and as more numbers came in from the fall months in terms of revenues that were coming in, it became apparent that we were able to make this further reduction into what the tax increase would be in the budget and still accomplish all that is included in there. So, with that, that would be the change that I would propose for tonight's budget vote.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Commissioner McCloskey, as I understand, the difference between the preliminary and the budget, preliminary budget and the final budget, our preliminary budget had total revenues of $53,121,727, and our new final budget is $53,878,000. $53,878,487, reflecting a change in revenues and a change in expenditures of about $757,000?
$756,760, to be exact.
Excellent. And is Finance Director Cuthbertson, do we publish these changes? these changes?
Historically, we do not. Historically, tomorrow, we will post the final budget in its entirety on our website.
So, so they will be published with the final budget?
Correct.
They'll be included in the final budget and?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything of particular note you'd like to highlight, or no?
No, just of that 750, $60,000 change, approximately half a million of it is really a timing issue. It's equipment that we had ordered in 2023 and in some cases even 2022 that has yet to come in. So we're just continuing to, we have to carry that over until the delivery happens, hopefully, fingers crossed, in 2024.
Okay, excellent. Well, we'll keep those fingers crossed. Are there any other changes to the 2024 preliminary budget? Hearing none. Commissioner McCloskey, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, and just, well, I'll make the motion first. Motion, motion to accept any changes to 2024 preliminary budget.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next item on our agenda for our consideration is the sewer rental charge as the final reading, ordinance number P-15 of 2023.
Motion to adopt the final reading of ordinance number P-15, 2023, authorizing the imposition of an annual sewer rate in the amount of $4.65 per thousand gallons of water consumed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
How about Commissioner Holmes?
Commissioner Holmes.
I say yes, too.
So sorry.
The next item on our agenda is our trash fee, ordinance P-16 of 2023.
Motion to adopt the final reading of ordinance P-16, 2023, establishing the annual trash fee at $283.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
And, and just to reiterate from last month that this, this fee has not changed.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. McCloskey. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next consideration, ordinance number 2987. This would be our tax levy.
So motion to adopt ordinance number 2987, 2023, fixing the tax rate for the year 2024 at 4.406 mils.
Correct.
I'll need a second and then we'll make the motion to amend it.
Copy that. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments, additions or deletions?
At this point, Mr. President, I would make a motion to amend the mils to 4.395.
Second. So who, who seconded the original motion?
I did, and I support that.
Commissioner Trombetta, you accept the amendment. Okay, so we have an amended ordinance fixing the tax rate at 4395, 4.395 mils?
Just, yes, 4.395 mils, which would lead to a 2.33%. That's not in the motion, but just to be clear for the public that the increase has been reduced to 2.33.
Thank you again for that clarification. So our tax levy for ordinance number 2987 is fixing the tax rate for the year 2024 at 4.395 mils. Mr. Berman, call the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2988, the budget appropriations. This is a first reading, and first reading qualifies as a final reading.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2988, 2023, appropriating funds established to be required for specific purpose of financing the municipal government for the year 2024, including all taxes, fees, service charges, and other revenue sources provided within all funds.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this ordinance? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. This concludes our consideration of the 2024 budget. Let me thank all of my colleagues on the board, on the Finance Committee, and all the commissioners who participated in and analyzed this, this budget. And as far as Mr. Berman and in particular Ms. Cuthbertson are, our staff, like professional athletes, you make this very, very difficult task look easy to the uneducated and uninitiated. Those of us who've been around long enough and we only have to live through one of these basically to know how complicated it is, appreciate the amount of work that goes into making this look so easy. So on behalf of all of us, I thank you all for your extraordinary professional efforts in, in this budget. So thank you, and thank you to all the department heads who worked to put their numbers together and to cooperate with our staff to make this budget. So that concludes the 2024 budget hearing. We now move to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The next item on our agenda is a Bureau of Fire update. Mr. Wexler.
Yes, Mr. President and public. Bureau of Fire responded to a total of 71 incidents in the month of November, 45 of which occurred inside the Havertown Township border, 26 were out of township where we provided mutual aid to other townships. The average personnel per call was 18. There were 1,696 personnel hours committed to those incidents and 911 hours of personnel hours committed to training this past month. Responded, the township responded to two working fires and one technical rescue. First fire was on the 6th at 773 Havertown Road, Bryn Mar Village Nursing Home, which was a basement fire. Next one was on the 15th at 610 Penfield Avenue, started on a second floor bedroom. The third was the technical rescue on Caricon Drive where two subjects were thrown over the embankment after a vehicle accident. We also applied mutual aid to eight working fires and one technical rescue in the rest of the county. And also, the Manoa Fire Company had 22 members complete their National Pro Board certification for vehicle rescue this past month. I had to say that the major fire that we had on Penfield was our colleague, Mr. Hart's home, and, and I'm happy to announce it wasn't a candle anyway, so, but anyway, but it just shows you what a great job the fire department did there. It was a pretty substantial fire and a big thing for your family, so we offer, Bureau of Fire offers our support to you, and anything you need, please ask, and the Fire Fire Company will be more than happy to help you and assist you in any way possible. They were wonderful, they had a fire. That's, that's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Next, our next report would normally be from our township auditor, who is not with us tonight, but he did alert all of us, or at least some of us, that A, he could not be here, but B, that he did go through all the warrants. And any questions that his review generated were raised to and answered satisfactorily by our township staff, and he recommends that we, that we approve the warrants as part of our agenda. And then he wrote something about the Eagles, and I'll just let him say it next month, so we'll go from there. Next item on our agenda is Mr. Berman giving the, delivering the township manager update.
Commissioner Wexler, on behalf of all the employees, all the departments, you've given us so much support, always made us feel very, very special, and that, that's on behalf of all the employees. And I did forget to give you something earlier. I'm gonna bring it out. It was purchased by the Township Administration and handcrafted by one of our employees in Public Works, and I'm gonna present that to you now. That concludes my report.
Yeah, surely you have nothing after that, right?
I do have.
Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berman. Next item for us to consider is the approval of our minutes. We have two sets of minutes, God bless you, two sets of minutes to consider. Our regular meeting minutes of November 13th, 2023, as well as the minutes of our preliminary budget meeting of November 20th, 2023. We should consider them separately, so I will entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes of November 13th, 2023.
Since you said it all, I'll just say so, 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 well, so moved, and it just made my, my job easier.
Excellent. All right, do we have a second? All right, we have a motion in a second for the regular meeting minutes of November 13th, 2023. Anybody have any questions or comments or additions to the meeting minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Now I will entertain a motion for the approval of the preliminary budget meeting minutes of November 20th, 2023. This is where you say so moved, Connor.
Oh, because you didn't read them all out.
Didn't I say?
So moved.
Take a second?
Second.
All right, before us, under consideration, any questions or comments on the preliminary budget meeting minutes of November 20th, 2023? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes, and before I move on, while we're speaking of minutes, I should note, and I should have said this at the start of the meeting, the Havertown Township Board met in executive session at 6:45 this evening to discuss a legal issue. We also met after the November 4th work session, also in executive, I'm sorry, after the December 4th work session, also for a legal matter in executive session. So, thank you. Moving on to approval of warrants.
Motion to approve the following warrant, number 12, 2023, totaling $6,737,884.86, general sewer fund payroll for November 22nd, 2023, in the amount of $1,071,674.05, general sewer fund payroll for December 7th, 2023, in the amount of $753,546.39, general fund disbursements, number 12, 2023, in the amount of $2,450,168.99, sewer fund disbursements, number 12, 2023, in the amount of $368,333.76, community development block grant fund disbursement, number 12, 2023, in the amount of $125,332.49, capital projects fund disbursement, number 12, 2023, in the amount of $633,011.67, American Rescue Plan Fund Disbursement, number 12, 2023, in the amount of $344,147.94, debt service 2018, GO Series Disbursement, 12, 2023, in the amount of $530,348.75, debt service 2020A, GO Series Disbursement, 12, number 12, 2023, in the amount of $355,073.75, debt service 2021, GO Service Disbursement, number 12, 2023, in the amount of $89,246.25, credit card statement ending November 27th, 2023, in the amount of $17,382.82.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments, additions or deletions? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. All right, next for our consideration, we'll have four ordinances to consider. The first ordinance is ordinance P-14 of 2023. This is a traffic ordinance.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the second reading
Mr. President, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P fourteen, 2023, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Special purpose parking zones established in front of one thirty-two Juniper Road, establish six thirteen Windwood Road on the east side of Kennelworth Road in front of the side entrance.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp? Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We do both.
We're going to P eighteen, 2023.
The next item for our consideration, ordinance number P eighteen of 2023. This is, relates to subdivision and land development.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P eighteen, 2023, amending chapter one sixty subdivision and land development, section one sixty dash five, B, four, C, and chapter one fifty-seven dash one, streets and sidewalks to require the installation of sidewalks as a subdivision or land development requirement.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this?
To comment today, there was a newspaper article outlining the fact that unlike most other countries, pedestrian deaths have been increasing in the United States. One way we can address this is more sidewalks and bike lanes. So this is a step in the right direction.
I agree. That was an alarming story, and it's the rest of the world, they go down at night and ours increase. Thank you for that, Commissioner Hart. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item for our consideration, ordinance P nineteen of 2023, traffic ordinance.
I move to adopt the first re- rating, re- rating of ordinance P nineteen twen- o- o- or twenty twenty-three, will authorize tra- 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 traffic for sh- or restrictions on the fol- fol- following hi- hi- highways, spec- per purpose parking zone estab- established in front of sixteen Al- Al- Woodmere Way.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek? Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item for our consideration, the final ordinance of the evening, ordinance P twenty of 2023. This is amending chapter one sixty-five on taxation.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to adopt ordinance P twenty, 2023, amending ordinance number nineteen sixty, adopted June thirtieth, nineteen eighty-six, and known as the general laws of the township of Haverford. Further amending chapter one sixty-five, taxation, Article six, property tax credit to qualifying volunteers of Bon Air, Brookline, Lanark, Manoa, and Oakmont Fire Companies.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. All right. Seven resolutions for consideration. The first resolution, number twenty-three, forty-four of 2023. This is Senior Economic Recovery Program.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Trombetta?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three, forty-four dash twenty-two, twenty-three, approving that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby extends the deadline for filing application with the township for the Senior Widow Disabled Residents Economic Recovery Payment Program from four PM on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, to four PM on April first, twenty twenty-four, and further authorizes the township manager and assistant township manager slash finance director to take all actions necessary to accomplish the stated objectives of this resolution.
All right, now we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on resolution twenty-three, forty-four? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next resolution for our consideration is resolution twenty-three, forty-five, twenty-two, twenty-three, establishing our twenty-two, twenty-four meeting dates for boards of commissioner, for the Board of Commissioners and various boards and commissions of the Board of Commissioners. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three, forty-five dash twenty-two, twenty-three, approving the twenty-two, twenty-four Board of Commissioners, Boards and Commissions meetings.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I trust everybody's gone through this. And any additions, deletions, comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next resolution for our consideration is twenty-three, forty-six of twenty-two, twenty-three, addressing the closing of Caracan Drive.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three, forty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three, approving the closing of Caracan Drive commencing Sunday, and only on Sunday, January first, twenty twenty-four, to December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, from seven AM to dusk, including the following holidays, Thursday, the Fourth of July, twenty twenty-four, Thanksgiving, Thursday, November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and Christmas, Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. And the Board of Commissioners designate Haverford Police Department's Chief John Viola to execute any documents with pen dot and be responsible for the safety and welfare of residents utilizing Caracan Drive.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the closing of Caracan Drive? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item for our consideration is resolution twenty-three, forty-eight of twenty-two, twenty-three, the use of ARPA funds for fire apparatus.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three, forty-eight dash twenty-two, twenty-three, approving that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the use of one million, six hundred thousand dollars of the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation toward the fire apparatus purchases approved by the Board of Commissioners, November thirteenth, twenty-two, twenty-three, at their public meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next resolution for our consideration is resolution twenty-three, forty-nine of twenty-two, twenty-three, the use of ARPA funds for the Haverford Township Business Revitalization and Modernization Matching Grant Program.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Trombetta?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three, forty-nine dash twenty-two, twenty-three, adopting the Business Revitalization and Modernization Matching Grant Program in Exhibit A of this resolution, and further authorizes the township manager and assistant township manager slash finance director to take all actions necessary to accomplish the stated objectives of this resolution. The Board of Commissioners desires to provide financial support by awarding matching grants to local businesses in Haverford Township, which meet the township's program requirements as discussed in Exhibit A, and are selected for award at an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, including program administration.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this program?
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Trombetta?
As discussed during last Monday's work session, the Board is being asked to consider a resolution that if approved would authorize the use of two hundred and twenty-five thousand in federal ARPA funds to administer a Business Revitalization and Modernization Matching Grant Program. As highlighted by Mr. Pysek from the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association. During the COVID-nineteen pandemic, many businesses were forced to make difficult decisions that significantly impacted their bottom line and future development. This competitive matching grant program is designed to support local businesses that were financially impacted by the pandemic by awarding grants to businesses and commercial property owners for expenses related to renovating interior business and dining areas, improving exterior facade and outdoor seating spaces, purchasing and/or installing energy-efficient equipment, or implementing technology upgrades to enhance online purchasing and customer engagement. By supporting these improvements, the township aims to help local businesses attract more customers, increase revenue, and remain competitive. Thanks to feedback from my colleagues on the board this past week, I've made three relatively unsubstantial language changes to strengthen the program description, also recognized as Exhibit A. The changes include having a representative from the Code's Enforcement Department on the Grants Committee, which will, that individual will offer valuable insight and expertise to the grant-making process. We also added two summary points under this considerations section that I believe further clarifies our primary goal of helping local businesses recover from and respond to the pandemic. Last week, Commissioner Hart also asked about plans for promoting this grant opportunity, so I wanted to have the opportunity to respond to that further to let you know that I worked with our assistant township manager and confirm that the township will send out postcards to the businesses in our township as we did for the Back to Business Grant Program. Our communications plan also includes having program information on the township website in the township's electronic newsletter, and it's my hope that my colleagues on this board will help to promote this program among their constituencies. Additionally, we hope to lean on our partners at the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association and Discover Haverford to connect with local businesses through their own means. On that note, I'd like to express my thanks again to Zach Pysek from the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association, who initiated this idea with me. Jean Angel from Discover Haverford, our township manager, assistant township manager, and the Economic Development Committee members, Commissioners Quinn, Gondek, and McCluskey for their hard work on developing this program description. So this evening, I asked for my colleagues to give their strong consideration in approving this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Trombetta or anybody? Hearing none? Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Our next resolution for consideration is resolution twenty-three, fifty of twenty-two, twenty-three. This is also another use of ARPA funds for replacement playground equipment at Mary Place.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three, fifty, twenty-two, twenty-three, approving that the Board of Commissioners hereby approves the use of ninety-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars of the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation to replace an all-inclusive playground composite at Mary Place.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. And our final resolution for consideration is a resolution twenty-three, fifty-one of twenty-two, twenty-three, also approving the use of ARPA funds for replacement fencing at Jack McDonald Field.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three, fifty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, approving that the Board of Commissioners hereby approves the use of eleven thousand dollars of the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for fencing at Jack McDonald Field.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. So we now move on to contract awards. Six contract awards to consider tonight. First contract award within the, I guess, addresses the police department. This is the four-year collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police.
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Haverford Township and the Fraternal Order of Police Delaware County Lodge twenty-seven on behalf of police officers of Haverford Township for contract terms effective January first, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Our next contract for consideration is change order number one for the library.
Mr. President, to approve change order number one for the library expansion and renovation general contractor, Rycon Construction, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars for demolition, site preparation fencing, and an office trailer at One Mill Road.
Second.
Are we done? We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Stepping away from the podium. So can we go to the next agenda item, park and ride facility?
Motion to award the park and ride facility at Mill Road and Caracan Drive to Scott Building Corporation, Norristown, in the amount of five hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any public, or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Moving on. Next agenda item, scadium.
Motion to approve two-year scadium mechanical preventive maintenance contract with Elliot Lewis, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, in the amount for year one, ten thousand dollars, and year two, ten thousand dollars, submitting the most responsible quote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We have a contract for police department public works traffic signal maintenance contract. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to reject all bids for the traffic signal maintenance contract with the intent to rebid.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Also within Public Works, Westchester Pike Tree Planting?
Motion to award Westchester Pike Tree Planting Project Contract to Westchester Media and Landscaping Company Incorporated, Aston, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $21,490, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on Westchester Pike Tree Planting? Hearing none?
Mr. Gondek?
Yes.
Mr. Forsti Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next thing on our agenda is the consideration of three purchases. The first purchase for our consideration is EMS apparatus.
Mr. President, make a motion to authorize the purchase of a Lifeline Ford F-450 Custom Superliner Type 1 Diesel 4x4 at a cost of $291,440 through CoStar's contract number 13-E22-252.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this purchase? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next purchase to consider for the Parks and Recreation Department is all-inclusive play structure.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of a large all-inclusive play structure at Murray Place from Eli Associates Carlisle, Pennsylvania, under CoStar's P A D G S O 14-E23-219 in the amount of $91,504.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Finally, our final purchase, the fencing for Jack McDonald Field.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of field fencing at Jack McDonald Field from Friends Company, Westchester, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $11,000, submitting the lowest responsible quote.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this final purchase? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is the continuation of Citizens Farm for non-agenda items. Mr. Diskin, if you would still like to come forward. You were, yep. When you're done, I will then open the floor to other folks who can get up and speak. So if you don't recall where you were, you were halfway through the first of three Es. So go ahead.
So first of all, I don't want to come across as being contentious, okay? I'd rather have a conversation, okay? But I do have to admit to a certain degree of frustration. I've been plugging away at this since July. And I've, although, as I said, Sergeant Long, who's in charge of this department for the police, has been very responsive to all my emails. Every time I've asked for, you know, can you come out and take a look at this, whatever it is, it's been very helpful. Spent 45 minutes with me at the department. Last week, I showed up without an appointment. We sat down, we talked about it. So, you know, but unfortunately, a lot of what I've heard is we can't. And if you hear we can't too many times, it begins to sound like we won't, okay? And I want to get past we won't. So the first obstacle was, oh, we can't, you need to get 80% of the residents to sign off on this petition to meet the first obstacle, as recommended by the Traffic Calming Handbook, blah, 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 blah. Well, as you know, I've read the Traffic Calming Handbook, and I can tell you, it says that you don't need any more than between 50% to 70% of people to sign off on a petition for something like this. So I don't know where the 80% came from, but I have the 80% now anyway. So obstacle number one. Obstacle number two, you know, what if emergency vehicles, et cetera, can't fit through? They can. We've established that. A test was done, okay? Number three, I acknowledge, this is not a perfect solution. I don't know that there is a perfect solution. You know, I heard the concerns of neighbors who didn't want to sign the petition, and they felt very strongly like, God, you know, I'm not going to be able to back out of my driveway if there's a car parked across the street from me because there's going to be one next to my driveway and one across the street. What are we going to do? And I get it, change is hard. And I don't know how it would work. But again, just to go back to the three Es. Engineering, which although this isn't physical engineering in the sense of putting up speed bumps or any of that sort of thing, allowing for cars on both sides of the streets is kind of informal engineering, okay? We don't have to get there yet, but if we do get there, what I'm proposing is what they also recommend in the Traffic Calming Handbook, which is a trial period. All I'm asking for is a three-to-six-month trial. Let's live with it. Let's get used to it in the real world. Maybe some of the people who are resistant to it are just concerned about changes, and their concerns may not come to pass, and they'd be great with it. Or it may turn out to be really problematic, in which case I'm happy to say, hey, I gave it a shot, it's not the answer. I don't have the perfect answer. I don't know that there is one. But I've heard we can't do speed bumps, we can't do other things, but we got to be able to do something. I mean, if you know the first block of Colfax Road, believe me, it is a sweeping curve. And traffic comes in off Darby Road, and they hit that curve, and there are cars parked along the right-hand side of the road heading down toward Grassland. They hit that curve, they're forced well over the midline of the road, the Crown. They're forced well over that. They treat it like a one-way street, and they really fly down that road. Now, okay, again, the state of Pennsylvania seems, for whatever reason, to think that going 25 miles an hour down the first block of Colfax Road is safe. Then, they also say you can't ticket for anybody going less than 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. That means going 35 miles an hour down this little block, the first block, okay? Where there are, as I said, 17 children living there under the age of 10 with big SUVs and everything parked on one side of the road with very bad sight lines on that side of the road. They're not going to see a kid coming out of those driveways. I've seen a kid get killed in Radnor at the fireworks about 15 years ago playing tag with his sister. I grew up with a kid who ran out in front of his house and got killed. And I know that one of the residents on the first block of Colfax Road lost her brother to a traffic accident at the intersection of Ellison Darby, you know, 15 or 20 years ago. It happens, okay? And I don't want it to happen again. So yeah, I've got pet peeves about my driveway and my visibility, but they're shared by other people on my side of the road. But again, we have an identifiable risk on the block with all these kids. And just because it hasn't happened in the 32 years I've been there, it doesn't mean it can't happen, and if it happens once, nobody's ever going to forget it. And we, again, are the exception in the neighborhood. We're the only street that doesn't, the only block that doesn't allow for this. You go to the second block of Colfax Road, and they have parking on both sides of the street. They're four inches wider, but okay, you know, it's an extra two inches on either side. Again, the fire trucks have gotten through. So that's that. I could read, I've got highlighted sections, I could tell you all about it. You know about it. But, you know, again, education, let's get some signs up. There's nothing on there right now that says, watch children, slow, curve ahead, anything like that. There's nothing. Nothing to warn people to be careful going down this block. That's number one. Number two, as far as education, again, the day after our last meeting here, I got a big sign in front of our house with 25 miles an hour on it with, you know, the readout of your speed, okay? This is where I left off for people coming down the block. Unfortunately, the first five days that that was in front of my house, which is too far down the block, I would argue, the real rate of speed is hit in the mid area. I'm down by the end of the block. But again, that sign was turned facing Grassland. So it wasn't even being directed to the cars coming from Darby Road. It was getting the cars coming up the street from Grassland, which are a problem, but not as big a problem. And oh, by the way, it was parked on my side of Colfax Road, which is where all the cars and Jeeps and SUVs park. So it was standing here, and I have pictures of all of this. It was here, the readout of your speed was completely obstructed at times by the Jeeps, the SUVs, and the trucks that were parked in front of them. So it was just this big sign facing Grassland Road, 25 miles an hour. Nobody could see how fast they were going coming up because it was obstructed. I'm sorry, Mr. Diskin, we can't do that on the other side of the road because there's no parking allowed on the other side of the road. So we can't put the sign over there where it would be visible. I mean, like, this is what I'm dealing with, okay? So what I'm asking for specifically is better signage, notifying the drivers, putting them on notification, calling their attention. We got kids here. We needed to be more careful, number one. Number two, bring that thing back out again a couple of more times. Do it on a monthly basis. I'd like to see that thing out on the street once a month until people get the message. We're on to what's going on here. We're going to pay attention. And then the next part, enforcement. I would challenge Chief Biola, anybody in the Police Department, go back through the records. I've walked my neighborhood hundreds, if not thousands, of times over the years. I can't tell you that I can remember a time I have ever seen a driver pulled over to get a warning or a citation for speeding in my neighborhood or blowing stop signs. And I could sit on my neighbor's porch any day at rush hour, and I could run my camera for an hour on my phone, and I bet you I could show you 10 times those stop signs are being blown by people. Sometimes it's a wink and a nod, sometimes it's barely anything, they just sail through. I mean, this is ridiculous. I'm asking for help from the police for better enforcement, help from the township, if you guys are the ones who are in charge of signs and paying for them. And, you know, start giving people some warnings, start writing some tickets, and let's have some learning going on here. Because the only thing these cars are learning going down my street is, we can do this with impunity. Nobody's writing tickets, there's no police presence other than a drive-through every once in a while. Nobody's learning from this. I got a ticket in Narberth for going 28 miles an hour about 20 years ago. Now, granted, Narberth's a borough, it's different. Believe me, when I hit Narberth, 25 miles an hour, period, end of story, because I know they don't play, or at least they didn't. I learned. There's no learning going on in my neighborhood, except negative learning. We can do this and beat the light at Eagle Road and get away with it. Okay? Thank you.
Seth, would you like to speak again? If you would share with us your last name?
Samuel.
Thank you.
Good memory, too. I'm bad with names, so I appreciate it. Sorry for the last time. Again, I'm Seth Samuel. I live on 63 Colfax, couple houses down on the opposite side of Peter. Again, I'm a small business. I'm out of mechanical right in Havertown. I love Havertown. My family loves Havertown. I grew up on two parkings, or I don't know how you would say, cars can park on both sides. I feel, in my opinion, that's a little bit more dangerous for children, right? You can't see on both sides of kids coming out. And if it's not broke, why are we trying to fix it? And again, Peter, I like you, you're a great guy. He's making it sound like it's the Wild, Wild West on Colfax Road. It's not. I don't know how people can go 35 miles an hour around a bend when people know the children are there, people are driving, everyone's safe and respectful. It's such a small strip, I don't know how they can go 35 miles an hour. And I live one house from the stop sign. I don't see them running stop signs, you know? So I will say this, we do park on both sides of the street. Pulling out your driveways wouldn't be worse, not just for me, for Peter and everybody else, because trying to get out, when I lived on a street that had two parking, I lived on Juniper Road, it was just saying 123. That's difficult, getting in and out, and you don't see your children coming out of the car. So my only thing is, I love Colfax, it's one of the reasons why we moved there on that one portion of it. It's great, neighbors are great, kids are great. And I just want to keep it the same. I don't want to hold anyone's time. I appreciate everyone's time here, and I just wanted to speak my opinion on it. So thank you, I appreciate everyone. And thank you, Bill. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on any item? Let me start over here, sir.
Hi, my name is Michael Lee. I live in the first ward. To give you some background, I previously attended quite a few public hearings and meetings on billboards in Haverford Township. Some of these meetings were in auditoriums and had hundreds of residents at the township in attendance. And this was in response to the Barkowski billboard proposal a number of years ago, put three sites on Westchester Pike and two sites on Lancaster Avenue. The township residents and commissioners were united in opposing billboards in the township. Last Tuesday, I became aware that there was a proposed settlement where the township would allow an electronic marathon-style billboard at Parks Car Wash on Westchester Pike. And my understanding was that the commissioners were going to discuss it at a working group meeting and then vote on it the following week. No specifics were given about the billboarder's size. My question is, is this accurate? If so, it raises a number of questions. Does this mean that the township is changing its no billboard position? And will there be public input on the billboard settlement before it's signed or agreed to? If the township and the Barkowski group do not reach a settlement, and I assume there's a problem if this is in fact true, does that mean that a judge will just submit a ruling that can be appealed by either Barkowski or the township? And will any agreement with Barkowski be binding on other billboard committees or future billboards from Barkowski? And will the Parks Car Wash be given a variance or a zoning change? And does this variance or zoning change open the door for other billboards and billboard litigation in the township for similar accommodation? In other words, does it make billboards more likely at other sites in the township? I think there's a lot of questions out there about, and we need public input on this. Thank you.
Sir, in the back, and then I'll get to you, Tom.
Team Commissioners, good evening. My name is Breck Taylor. I've been putting up holiday decorations at 14 Colfax Road since 1986. And I'm here to speak to the traffic issue on 14 Colfax. I agree there is a concern, and I like the proposals that we've heard tonight about progressive, you know, trying things one after the other. Let's try the small things first. Let's see if that makes a difference. I also think, as you can see, we have a disagreement among the residents themselves regarding the extensiveness and severity of the traffic speeding problem. And I would propose, I know we've had excellent data studies done by the Police Department where they hang the super high-tech thing on the pole and records things. That's helpful, and we've gotten sort of summary data out of that. But I think what would help us would be if the Police Department were willing to release incident record-level data in machine-level form so we could look at the traffic pattern and understand it in some more detail. That would inform our discussion, if we can look at the data and see what is actually going on with the traffic on Colfax. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Tony Falcone. I live at Five Colfax. And while I agree with Pete Diskin, I've known Pete for a long time. I've been there since 1988. I don't want parking on both sides because I've had four vehicles damaged because of the tightness of the road. But at the same time, I agree with everything else Pete says, that at Five Colfax, I can sit on my front porch, and those cars come flying off of Darby, like, they don't skip a beat. They turn the corner and they go down. And as Pete says, they go and hit a blind curve. I know how hard it is for me to back out of my driveway. I'm on the odd side, obviously, five, so I have no cars parked. But when I go to back out of my driveway, I literally wait probably four, five, six cars. Because when I turn and look one way and look the other way, there's a car coming up, then there's a car coming down. I don't know what we can do except for the signage, maybe? You know, speed limit signs up there, children at play. I just want to, I mean, I want to support Pete, but they do have to do something because there's a lot of traffic coming up and down Colfax. Thank you.
Good evening, Todd Hall. I live in the second ward. Haverford Township is a great township, and it's not only something I believe, it's the title of a song by Matt Farley under the name "The Guy Who Sings About Cities and Towns." Matt has written over 24,000 songs about multiple topics under multiple names. So if that number of songs written, the song length is brief. I will read the lyrics as it reflects how I feel about this township overall to paint a complete picture beyond my occasional mentions of where I feel there is room for improvement. "Haverford Township is a great township located in Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, Haverford Township's got a lot of nice communities in it. Oh, yeah. Lots of nice people living in Haverford. Haverford is a good suburban area. Look at the Darby Creek flowing through Haverford. What a nice creek, what a wonderful area. Haverford is a wonderful township. Oh, yeah, it's great. Lots of nice houses there in Haverford, lots of good people living the American dream. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, you should move to Haverford. Raise your family, have yourself a good time. Haverford is like the greatest place in the whole entire world. Haverford is nice and great. It's so wonderful. It's a good township, and I love it. Haverford has got a really good school system, teaching all the little kids lots of important stuff. If you grow up in Haverford, you're going to grow up to be a wonderful citizen of the world. Oh, yes, 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 yes. Haverford is like the greatest place in the world. Go to Haverford College, get an education, do something with your life. Haverford is a nice area." That's the end of the lyrics. During this holiday season, we can be thankful for this place that we call home.
I just wish you would have said, "I'd like to hear that."
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Is there anybody else who has anything else to add? Yes. Perhaps musical accompaniment?
Not a chance. It does have a nice beat. I don't know if I could dance to it, though. Hi, Brian Aron, Ninth Ward. I am completing my fourth year as a member of the Historical Commission, as we talked about last month, and I'm really proud that we were able to put together that plaque program that will hopefully really start to get some of the people that have been a little nervous about joining and making sure that their property is protected in the Historic Resource Survey to help us with that and put a plaque up and be part of this. In our meeting a few weeks ago, there was some scuttlebutt. Don't know if it's true or not, that there is some discussion with the Board of Commissioners about enacting an ordinance or changing the ordinance to keep, let me try to explain this as best I can, to have township buildings exempted from having to come to the Historical Commission to make sure that everything's being done in an appropriate manner. I hope that's not true, and if it is true, I hope that you will consider not doing that because, in my opinion, what that would do is kind of, the statement that you hear from time to time is, well, do what I say, not what I do. And it would kind of disincent property owners to be part of the Historic Resource Survey, well, look, the township doesn't have to do it. Why should I? So I kind of really hope that we don't go down that road. Now that I have that out of the way, I want to tell a quick story about Bill Now that I have that out of the way, I want to tell a quick story about Bill as part of the ninth ward. Remember back when he had decided to run? I was in my backyard doing some work, I think I was mowing the lawn, and all of a sudden, I see this individual walking behind my house, and it's Bill, he's like, "Hey, Brian, how you doing?" My first thought was, oh my God, I didn't know he lived near me. Because we hadn't talked about that. He had been a boss at a company I had worked for, and I was kind of hoping the first thing out of his mouth was, "Why did you leave?" And I didn't want to have to explain that I left for more money and a better job, but he said to me, "Well, you know what, I've decided to run for the board of commissioners." You know, I'm kind of an outsider, I've never really been involved in politics. But I think it's important that somebody from the outside get involved and really try to make some changes and really try to make a difference in the township. And I said to him, "Well, if there's anything I can do, I will help you." And I did some, you know, walking around, talking to people, talking at, outside of, you know, polling places and talking them up. So I apologize now for 16 years ago having done that. No, seriously, Bill, I'm really proud of what you've been able to accomplish in these 16 years. He was very instrumental in me wanting to actually serve in the historical commission. Because I thought, you know, here I am, I should be giving back to the township too. I've only been here for 21 years. He's been here for a lot longer, but I love this place as much as anyone who's lived here their whole life. So, thank you, Bill, for all that you've done, and really, any, anything I can do in the future, you know, we've talked about this, you know where to find me, boy, does he know where to find me. But congratulations and best of luck in whatever it is you do next.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Is there anybody else on either side of the room who'd like to speak on any subject? Thank you all for your comments. The, one question was raised about the billboard settlements, about potential for settling the billboard issue. It is something that we reported on last week at the work session, it is something we will have meetings about. So, it is, I would stay, just stay tuned on that issue. It is something that is under consideration, it's something appropriate for executive session discussions among the board members because it is active litigation and has been for quite some time. But it will not be finalized without, you know, without information getting out to the public and opportunities for meetings, you know, for our meetings to take place and for it to be publicized on the agenda. I think that's, and then Colfax Road, thank you all for your comments. I wish you peace this holiday season across the street from one another. And there we have it. No, I, it certainly, every indication was that you folks are good and a wonderful neighborhood, and I count on our police department and all of us to consider and evaluate the information you gave us, so thank you for that. Does, I think that covers everything that was talked about.
Dr. Ramon had a question about the exemption from the...
Oh, yeah, it is...
I may have got confused with the zoning.
So, well, there was, we were, we had talked about scheduling two public hearings, one of which was for the, was for the sidewalk ordinance. I don't think we've scheduled or held a public hearing on whether or not to consider the exemption from the zoning or, or other historical commission for township-owned property. It is something other townships do, is something that is being evaluated. And if it does come before this board for consideration, it will certainly come before this, it is, it is required that it be part of a public hearing. And I don't mean just a meeting, but an actual called public hearing where people can testify. And then, obviously, it carries with it its own political pitfalls of do as I say and not as I do, and certainly something all of us are considering, but it is a, it is a power that a number of municipalities throughout Pennsylvania wield, and it is our duty at least to consider it and to evaluate what is available, what isn't available. So, but thank you for your point, and it's well taken. Does any commissioner have any new business to bring before us today? Hearing none, we will just move to other business. Mr. Gondik.
Thank you very much. I guess just to kind of get things started off, you know, Bill, congratulations. You know, obviously, I, you know, being the newest member of the board, I've only, you know, been on this board with you for, I guess, about a year and a half, but I have had the pleasure of knowing you for probably somewhere between 15 and 20 years. And the one thing that I will say is that, you know, one thing I can say about you that I've taken away from knowing you on the board is that you do, you always, you always come at every issue or question and view it and view it, I should say, review it, in terms of your constituents, and in terms of the citizens of the township, and in terms of the citizens of the ninth ward. And you base your, as far as I can tell, you base your decisions on that value, and I think that that's a true wholesome value for us as commissioners. And I applaud you for that. And in the 15 to 20 years I've known you, when I haven't been on the board, I can say that I've known that you've been a pivotal part of this board through a lot of different things, the township building moving, the crack development, the library, and a lot of other things, the development of the various municipal services around here. And that kind of goes to probably the biggest aspect that I've taken away from the time that I've known you, is your dedication to public service. My involvement with you is, you know, been through, you know, the fire companies, I've known your involvement over at Manoa for a long, long time, you know, your background, and just your overall dedication to the community in all of those aspects. And for that, I definitely applaud you. You are one of the standard bearers in that regard, and should be very proud, and we should be very proud of you. And for that, you know, I thank you and I applaud you, and, you know, we all have large shoes to fill in terms of following your lead. And Mike, who I know is here at one point, he's still here, has even larger shoes to try to fill in terms of picking up the mantle of the ninth ward and running with it. So, thank you, and you've earned some, some well-deserved rest. I know that your family is, the number of grandkids has been, pop, increasing exponentially lately, so now you get to spend even more time with them. And good luck and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
As far as everything else, I'll keep it brief, I know that there's probably going to be a lot of other speeches. Congratulations to the new officers that we added, welcome additions to the police force. Chief, you've built a hell of a force with your team, and congratulations on the two newest additions. And then, at the end of the day, finally, I just want to wish everyone happy holidays, have a happy new year, let's have safe holidays, safe new year. And the only thing I would just reiterate to everyone who's watching this is, as we enter into the holiday season, you know, we don't know what's going in, going on in other people's lives, and what they're going through, especially during this holiday season. And so, I kind of just circle back and just ask everyone to kind of remember a basic, basic concept that I think is simple to, simple to say, harder to do, and that's just be kind. As we enter the holidays and the new year, just keep that in mind, be kind. Thank you very much, and have a good, have a good, good new year.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondik. Mr. Porcy Grubbs.
I'd like to thank you, Todd Hall, for sharing the lyrics from that song. I had not heard it, but I will definitely look it up on Spotify. I do think that he might need to add another stanza in honor of Bill Wexler. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Dedication.
He says officially, yeah. This has definitely slipped into the surreal, all right.
But, as I was listening to you, I was thinking about all the ways that you have always celebrated the staff and the public works folks and police force, fire and the EMS. And I will, I take that advice immediately to heart to keep all those folks in mind that make our township, oh, yes, a very great place to live. And so, thank you. I will miss your wisdom and your measured advice and perspective at our public meetings and also during our executive sessions, because I always listen much more carefully when you are speaking, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would also remind everyone that the Haverford Public Library is now open at its temporary location in Manoa Center. It is a convenient spot with lots of parking, and they have at that location the most popular and newest items, items available for checkout, including hotspots, rokus, and museum passes. So if you're looking for something to do with the kids, definitely grab museum passes because that, that can make the weeks off easier to go by. Also, if you need any items that they don't currently have, they have daily van services coming from Delaware, other Delaware County libraries, so they can get you that item that you want right away. So take advantage of our library, have a wonderful holiday season, whatever you're celebrating, and I hope that you remain safe and enjoy your time with family and friends, and very happy new year.
Thank you, Mr. Porcy Grubbs. Mr. McCloskey.
I also want to just wish everyone a happy holidays and happy new year. Hopefully, everyone gets to spend some time with their families and enjoy the time that you have together, echoing sort of what Brian said. Along those lines, the fire company did move to this Sunday, October, or, excuse me, December 17th, where they'll be driving around their friend from the North Pole. So, hopefully, if you're in the neighborhood, keep a listen for that. And just echo what everyone else has said about Commissioner Wexler. Bill, it's been, it's been a real privilege to serve with you. Bill, I always, I always, I always think Bill is, Bill is the type of guy I want to be when I grow up, right? Like you saw, you saw his beautiful family here, and I know some of them, and they're beautiful people as well, and he, he's very rich in the areas that are important. But Bill is also a guy who is, you know, Mr. Rogers used to tell kids when things were scary to look for the helpers, and Bill is the epitome of a helper. You know, he not only was a firefighter, he not only went to the, served in the military, but if you just talk to him for a little bit, you hear stories of him going around town, and he helps people in numerous ways, big and small. And I know he did that through the ninth ward, and he did that serving on this board and in Havertown. And for our connection, I can say, Bill, that you're a true man for others, and appreciate, appreciate the privilege to serve with you. So, best of luck in retirement.
Thank you. I knew it was time when the commissioners are the same age as my kids.
Well, I did, and I, and I, and I'd be remiss without saying that I noticed that you didn't thank any of the son-in-laws.
I thank my family, they're all family.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Commissioner Caveter.
Thank you. I want to note that a couple of weeks ago, I spent some time at the Haverford Middle School with the sixth graders, and every year, they present some projects that they work on to improve the township. And I had a great time there, and I want to extend my congratulations to all the students who participated, as well as the educators. I think this is a really great civic activity, and I was happy to be part of the experience. The day that I was there, so was our Director of Parks and Recreation, Brian Barrett, and it was just, it's a great event and a great way to get students engaged in how they can improve their communities. This week is the final leaf pickup in Ward Five, so Public Works will be around. This Friday, the Cooperstown Civic Association is holding its annual luminary night and carriage ride. It's a great holiday event, and I encourage everyone to check that out. And I just want to echo everyone's comments about Commissioner Wexler. I too am pretty new on the board, but one of the things that I've drawn from my experience is that we really are a local government that works, and part of that is because of independent thinking, people who are really common sense oriented, people who bring wisdom that represents their constituents, and I, I think that's true of you in every way. I think you're a really good role model for all of us in how to have functional government and really try to improve the lives of the people that live here. So, I wish everybody a happy holiday season, happy new year, and that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Caveter. Commissioner Quinn.
Yes, Santa Claus will be on his way around, or the Sunday beginning at noon, right, Chief? Okay, so that, so that will be good, I'm sure everybody's been, will be pumped to see, to see him. And this week, while, while, while you wait, wait for him, I think you all should rake your leaves, if there's any left, because net, next week will be, the time the leaves will be, will be, or collected. And, Bill, when I first joined this board, my first vote was to make you the head of the board, so that I thought was a great, great vote, and I will miss your advice, you've always been one who, when I talk, talk to you, I always, I always hear, hear things that make me think about, about things, like things more, and to see things or the other way. So, I like that. And, and Mike, this is the cool end of the board, so don't trust them over there, okay? So this is the cool end of the board. And...
Cool, cold.
Four years ago, when I joined this board, I was the new guy on this board, and now I'm considered one of the old guys on the board. Not old, yet, I'm still the youngest one on the board, but, but I'm now part of the old group with Larry and Kevin and Jerry, sorry to call you guys old. But, thank you again, Bill, for all of your years, you are a good friend, and I will miss you on this board.
Yeah, just to reiterate, the eighth ward will also have their second leaf collection beginning next Monday, the 18th. Have your leaves at the curb, not in the street, by Monday morning. I must say, I never expected to have my home in the fire report, but unfortunately, it was. It was, just all five fire departments were there, they did a wonderful job. I want to comment that I voted for the trucks before you came, so. They got there quickly. They did a wonderful job. I also, I, you know, can't thank the township staff, my fellow commissioners, my neighbors, just involved community members who've reached out to me and my family. We are truly blessed to live in this community, you've been wonderful. And finally, Bill, when I'm going to miss you as the other old white man at this end of the, and, and the block here where the right wing of this table, although it does sort of break down, because that makes Brian the AOC of the board, and I don't think he quite fits in that role. One story...
I don't know where we are. Go on, Jerry. You want to reserve some time, Commissioner Gondik?
He just got re-elected, he doesn't...
Now he's going to unmask himself as the liberal.
One story about Bill, and it relates to the fire. On the day of the fire, I had run upstairs, saw smoke, yelled to my daughter, "We need to get, we need to get out of the house," ran downstairs, grabbed my phone, called 911, realized the dogs were still in the house, ran back in, went out the back door, and as I'm coming around to the front again, there's Bill, and I was like, I just called 911, "How'd you get here?" He had been driving down the street, saw me, immediately ran to his car, got a fire extinguisher. I don't think I told you it wasn't a candle that had gone, but we were well beyond that. But, Bill stayed as the fire department came and joined in fighting the fire, stayed afterward, comfort, and has been just wonderful ever since, you know, before and after. So, I mean, I think that shows Bill's dedication to the community and the type of person he is, and I will really miss sitting next to you here. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Hart. Mr. Wexler, is it all right if I... Mr. Wexler, is it all right if I let you go last and let Commissioner Trombetta and myself say something before you go?
Thank you.
Good. Commissioner Trombetta.
So I just wish to join my colleagues in expressing my deepest gratitude to Commissioner Wexler for his many years of service to our community. In my time working alongside Commissioner Wexler, I've witnessed his thoughtfulness in his deliberations, genuine kindness towards others, and unwavering dedication to our community. I consider myself fortunate to have the opportunity to work with and learn from Commissioner Wexler. While he may be leaving the board, I'm confident that his commitment to service will endure, and I'm grateful to know that he'll be continuing with the Manoa Fire Company. So thank you, Bill, for your invaluable contributions, and best wishes to you and your family as you enjoy your retirement from the service on this board. It was when I was reflecting on Bill's service that I was reminded what a privilege it has been to serve on this board and in service to our community this year. It truly has been a remarkable year. We've implemented a plastic pollution reduction ordinance and several initiatives aimed at protecting our environment. We've moved forward on a long overdue library renovation and expansion and a second phase of our Pennsy Trail. We've also moved forward on initiatives that support our businesses, nonprofit organizations, older adults, women, and minorities. We've made our township more accessible with Haverford Alerts, our citizens reporter, and updates for our township website. We've made major investments in our police department, emergency services, and parks, playgrounds, and trails to continue to promote the vitality of our community. But of course, I also recognized, I swear, I wrote this speech before Bill mentioned this, but I recognize that the board's only as good as the incredible township staff that are working on a daily basis to advance these projects and initiatives. Thank you so much to Dave and Amy and to all of our township staff for their countless hours that they've spent serving our community and your tireless devotion to making our community a safe, healthy, and happy place to live, work, and raise a family. Finally, as I close out my second year of service on the Board of Commissioners, I want to thank the residents of Haverford Township and especially my constituents in the Fourth Ward for affording me the privilege of serving on this board. It has been truly a tremendous honor. So with that, happy holidays, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. Bill, there was something I admired in your leadership on the board. You entered the board as its president and served as its president as many years as you didn't over these last 16. And one thing I would watch you do, you tended to speak on a subject last, and you spoke once, and it was often quite compelling and usually ended the debate. And in just about every single time, you and I ended up on the same side of issues. There was one specific last word you said on an ordinance back in 2011 when we expanded human rights here in Haverford Township, and you were the final and fifth crucial vote. And somebody said, "Isn't this a national issue?" And you said, "Civil rights started at the grassroots level, and this should start here as well." And you cast the fifth and final vote, affirmative vote, for expanding human relations here in Haverford Township. I know the political cost that that created for you, but I also knew your conscience and, and your heart led you to vote the way that you did. I said it then, but I'll say it again, how much I admired that position that you took, how much I've admired your leadership, how much I've honored your leadership style in the breach, honestly, and how much I will miss your presence on this board. But it will be felt, its impact will be felt for a very long time. I've talked in the past often about 2005 as the start of a revolution here. 2007 was another very important start of that revolution when you ran successfully for Haverford, for the board and, and joined us in January. It has been my privilege to serve under you and with you, and it is my sad duty to bid you farewell on this board. With that, turn the meeting over to you, and, and I do that with my thanks for your service.
Thank you all for your kind words. I really don't have much to say, I said it at the beginning of the meeting, but truly, the staff here is, is top-notch. We've accomplished a lot of things in the 16 years. Larry's been on board just as long. The human rights was one of the major things that I'm proud of. But Laura also mentioned the middle school. I do, I do that every year. It's the best thing that goes on. I think it's, it's great to see the kids. I think the Triangle Park was an outgrowth of one of those presentations years ago when Tim Denny was recreation week, so we had the display up there. Little things about what they want to do to the park, you know, Brian gets a lot of good input. We get a lot of things, you know, Jerry was there, Brian, Jerry, just great things that these young kids come. And then the really neat thing is the two teachers that really shepherd that act. It's, it's great to live in a community where we have teachers of that quality and quantity that can teach these kids and make them excited about something like that. So it's a great place to live. My kids have gone there, my grandkids mostly. It's been good. But it's been a pleasure to serve. I feel honored to have done it, but, you know, it's, and I'm not worried about somebody filling my shoes. They're only seven and a half, and he's got much bigger feet, so you're going to be in great shape with Mike. Things will go on. We've done good things, but you don't dwell on it. We take a vote, you disagree, you move on. You know, if it goes 9-0 or 5-4, that's the quality of a good board. You still work together, you don't hold a grudge, and you just keep moving on. So I thank you for all your support and our being able to work with you, and the staff especially, Amy, Dave, John, Joe, Dave Pinone, I forgot to mention, but I'll see him, I see him enough, and EMS chief. It's just, it's just been a pleasure to be able to serve, and I hope that Mike is able to serve in the same capacity, I'm sure he will, as all you do, and I hope you'll welcome him. And nothing's going to miss a beat with this, you know, we could all go away tomorrow, and the people that'll fill our shoes are going to do a great job and work well together. So I think it's, I think, because we live in a great town, it's a great place. So again, thank you for all the kind words that you guys have made. I know it may seem like a lot of times we're on polar ends and opposites, and we fight a lot, but in a back room, we have a lot of fun and enjoy a few drinks together, and it's, it's good. So I wish everybody happy holidays. I'll say Merry Christmas, happy, you know, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, everything today. I'll say all the politically incorrect stuff for everybody. We know all the different holidays, it's a great place to live. We welcome everybody living and working together and enjoying their own beliefs, their own religions, their own customs, their own holidays. It's a great, it's a great place to live and welcoming to everybody. So thank you all, and thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. I've enjoyed my 16 years, but I'm going to enjoy the next 16 just as much, I hope, so thank you.
Well, I wish peace on earth and goodwill toward all, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
We are adjourned.